Appreciate your being here. This is a Pace City Council meeting for February 5th, 2020. The time is, we'll say five after six on the clock here in the council room. Been able to ask Jeremy Miller if he would give us the prayer. I appreciate the short notice if he could do that, of course, we'd appreciate it now. If you'd just come up to the pulpit.
Jeremy, Father, I think this day, I think you're able to get here safely and hopefully be able to get some stuff taken care of and we'll be able to have a good productive time. Maybe you just go ahead and say that.
Thank you, Jeremy, appreciate very much. I will also ask your councilman, Hayed, if she would leave some place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and, we had a work session earlier, that was from five to six, that's one of the reasons we're a little late, and we've done the flyer and the pledge. We'll go on to the consent agenda, approval of the January 15th, 2020 council meeting. Council, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second? A motion has been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll go on to D petitions. The public will open a public forum, anyone can speak on items that are not on the agenda. Please let me hear comments to three minutes, if you would, and get up, when you come up, tell us your name and where you live. So we'll go ahead and open the, come on up. We're not scary, go ahead.
There's a lot of people here, though. So my name's Shayna Wood, I have lecturing in Pace in about two years. We live in the townhomes across from the baseball field here in town, and I actually just wanted to come with an idea slash kind of request.
Which baseball, is it on the side of town?
The Gene Hillman, by the high school.
Okay, by the high school.
Yes, yes, so there's a soccer field and the baseball field right there, and a lot of people use that walking path, the kids coming to and from school, and a lot of moms with strollers and dog walkers, and we ourselves have a dog, and we've noticed there's a lot of dog poop that gets left in the soccer field. So I've taken it upon myself several times to clean it up when it gets too bad because we have a toddler and a dog of our own, but I was hoping to get a sign of some sort asking owners to please pick up after their animals, or something that I would even be willing to be responsible, restocking bags, something made available there, just because I have a dog too, I don't want that area banned from dogs, so I was hoping that one step that direction was prevented from, no dogs altogether on the soccer field, not the baseball side, that's already no animals, but that was my only.
I would advise we should again, have staff take a look at that and see what the possibilities are.
I would second that, by the way, I brought it up once before with the hollow park trails, there's lots of dog messes, and a lot of places have little bags that you take and you clean up your dog mess, I'm all bigger.
We're actually also looking at the possibility of getting one of the first dog parked at the city's house, or we're exploring that.
Cool, thank you, that's everything.
Yes, sir.
How are you, Bill? My name's Grant Levin, I live on 930, West 911, South 930 West. The issue I've got is to, is with your water meter for that pressurized irrigation. Now you guys come in and excavated about a five by two foot piece in my lawn now, and I went out and measured that, that meter would have fit in your, the box that was there before they did that. And in that, during the installation, I had an inline shut off valve, that's gone. I had a drain line installed to drain my line, that's gone. And I had a bunch of, I connected everything with unions, instead of glued unions, they were threaded ones, those are all gone. And I tried a bunch of my irrigation pipe out, they moved your box about a foot farther in from where it was, it was out by the road, they moved it farther into my yard, and then they moved, they cut out the line, moved my, all the filter assembly, they moved that farther into my yard, and then when they come and put boxes in, they didn't put them deep enough, so they're sticking out. Then you come in and poured gravel all the way around that, outside of the box and inside of the box. So now they stick up out on my lawn, so I can't take care of that. And this morning, when I got back, I had to make running errand when I got back, here, somebody come along and dumped dirt on top of your gravel that they'd put there. So maybe you people need to come down and take a look at the mess you've got down there, and I'd like to see if one of the council would meet me at my property. I'm speaking for my daughter as well, she's at 890, or 985, South 930 West, and see if we can resolve what the issue that we have. Commitment?
I can come down and look, Grant.
Pardon me?
I can come down and look, so.
I want more than mine.
Yeah, have you talked to the city about this, do they know, so they can have an opportunity to go down and talk to the contractor and work on it?
Hey, Brian, you hired the contractor, you are responsible for what the contractor does.
Well, no, that's why, that's why I'm saying, have you talked to people over there?
I'm not in a position or neither do I have any desire to track your contractor down.
No, I'm not talking about the contractor, I'm talking about the city staff, they're all.
But I wanted to get this in city minutes.
Right, and that's great.
So that you know where the problem is, let's get it resolved, because I think there's some real issues. I bet you're aware of some of them.
We'll get it resolved, one way or the other.
Okay, come up with a plan, I'll be available this week sometime, let's take a look at it. Well, as long as the snow's gone. There's good weather in January. Well, thank you for your time. Appreciate it. You bet.
Anyone else want to take advantage of the public forum that's open at this time? Okay, we'll thank those that have taken that, the nineties of that, and we'll go ahead and close the public forum. And then we'll move on to staff reports, have any staff would like to come visit with us?
Mayor, council, I thought I'd give councilman about this snow report, since I haven't done it for a while. We are at 95% precipitation, 98% on snow water equivalent, and about 40 inches of snow according to the snow town site, so, we're pretty much at normal, so that's good. I mean, we're not exceptional, but we're not down at 60 degrees, hoping we're going to get there, so. Just to address the PI comment, we'll have Cameron and his group go out and look at it, but we are putting gravel underneath all the boxes and putting dirt back around them, and they will come back and do sod at the end, so that is how we're doing all of them. You know, as for being too high and stuff, we can definitely address that, but we are, that is how we're doing it, so.
And also address what they've taken out, if they didn't replace it, they.
Well, we're putting back in two stop and laces and a bigger box, so that we can, if we ever have to maintain the meter, that is how we're doing it, we wanted to be able to work on them, not, you know, have them so tight in there you can't get to them. I mean, we could definitely look at it, but we're not, that is how we're doing it, I mean, mine's done, they had to move my filter and stuff, there's no room to put everything like it was back, so, that's something we can definitely look at and address, but stuff does have to disappear and move and be adjusted, so.
But if you would do that, I know you will.
Yeah, I'll let Cameron.
Report back to us. What about the placement into the yards, you know, there's been a couple of concerns that they're moved further into the yards than what we had said in our meeting?
We're trying to stay as close to where the existing boxes were, you know, like mine, they were just shifted horizontally in the yard, you know, some depending on the orientation, they're moving them a little bit farther in with the existing box, so it just kind of depends, but we're trying to stay, obviously, adhesments and right away that we have, I mean, in some cases, there, you know, there may not be, but it's pretty hard when you've got thousands of subdivisions in the city to check them all before they get there, but as we find out, we're addressing it.
I was gonna say, what do we do if we find out the one is further into the right way and it's no longer in the city easement or further in than what we had stated?
We might have to go move it if we can, if there's room to put it anywhere.
Okay. There's two gentlemen here that would like you to look at their meters, and I will show their, is Ken still here? Oh, Ken Leonard.
Yeah, okay. We mapped it today.
You mapped it today?
Yeah. You don't have anything else, let's go on.
Thank you.
Thanks, brother. Come on up, chief.
Fat squeeze between the chair down. Just the end of month totals for January are as follows, we had 88 arrests, 142 offenses, 168 citations, 234 violations, 1,088 calls for service, 352 traffic stops, and 22 traffic accidents, so having no snow last month helped us a lot with traffic accidents, so, that's all I got tonight, lest you guys have something else.
Thank you. Another chief. Having the same problem.
Chief Bishop's just a little bit skinnier than I am. So, like with the police, we had, with fire, we had 27 calls for fire this last month, and also medical, 128, so staying consistently busy, so. Also, just to let you know, we continue to have our community first aid CPR classes, we've been having those about every quarter, continue to see good results from that, a lot of people like to take advantage of that, so, we have one next Wednesday. Also, tomorrow we'll take delivery of our new ambulance that we've had built, so that'll be nice to get that in service, it'll take us probably a week or so to get it stocked and have it inspected by the state so we can put it in service, it'd be nice to have that in there and replace one of our old ones, so, that's, go on, any questions? Thanks.
Thank you, chief. We're going to see who really is skinny and who's not. Well, ugly.
Well, they all scooted their chairs up as well, so. Just an update in recreation and to the public as well, we just finished our women's volleyball, actually, tonight, tomorrow night are the tournament nights, in women's volleyball, we also finished our youth skiing program this last weekend, and that went well. We are taking registrations in youth, we're starting a youth spring soccer, we did a survey last fall, and there's a lot of response, so we're trying that out, so if you or your loved ones would like to sign up for youth soccer this spring, you can do that. As well, we're opening registration for our extreme tumbling, the next six week program, and adult co-ed volleyball is coming up. We've also been working with Nestor and JUV Engineering to try to get the ball fields out to bid, we're close with that, the landscape architect is wrapping things up on the irrigation and landscape plans, he anticipated being done last week, but he's not quite done yet, so hopefully we can push that out, too. Thank you.
Thanks, Coram. Doesn't appear there's any other staff that would like to counsel, turn it over to this council? Start with council, aren't you?
I have something to say today. Anyway, I wanted to thank the road department for getting the roads cleared off, I'm sure we don't like ice, we don't like slipping and sliding, and I'm sure they'll be out there again tonight. I want to thank Brian, he's the chair of the economic development, and he does a lot of work, and I appreciate it because he keeps us updated. Thank you, Brian. I want to thank the development services, I don't think people realize with all this building coming in, these people are like running around, like super busy, I just want to thank them for standing up on their laws, their ordinances, and taking care of the people that do come in, and I just want to give them an attaboy because I know they're working really hard to help build the city in the correct way. Also, all of the supervisors, I want to thank you for having your employees' backs, and hopefully you're always encouraging them to do the best they can, that's just really important, it's so important to take care of employees. That's all I have to say.
Okay, I also like to thank the street crews, the snow miles, it's one of those jobs that people are always upset that you didn't get to the yard fast enough, or that you cleaned it too wide, and you had to shovel the snow off your side, what that you just cleaned, but I appreciate them, I appreciate what they do, coming out on early mornings, and whenever the snow comes, they get up and they come and they plant our roads. Just a couple of things, just for reference, since there's a large crowd here, there were, I think when we got elected, there were like 26, was it 26 or 46 home permits in the city? We just looked at this and we're 300, we're 300 and something, there's a lot of criticism that Pace wasn't growing, and now we're growing and there's a lot of, oh, wait a second, I don't know if I like this growth, so, we've had both, but the Pace is growing quite a bit, and you'll see that, and you've probably seen that around town. This isn't complete yet, but I know a lot of people are interested in this, we had our warrants accepted by the state for traffic lights by McDonald's and on the road that goes to the temple. It'll be a while before they get funded, but we do have the warrants in place, meaning that we can, that they're in the works to go and have traffic lights, so there's a lot of people that are concerned about the traffic and turning right there, and so, those are on the way. I was asked to share a message with the city, and maybe we need to have a work session on this, there's a lot of people who are concerned about beautification of Pace and whether Pace is upholding the codes that we have in place, and whether they address these or not. Just to put it out on the record, I'm kind of a property rights person, and I don't like overpolicing of whether I've got my kid's bike on the front lawn per se, but I do think that we need to look at the ordinances we have in place for beautification of the city, and there are a lot of people who are very concerned and reached out to me, I'd say it's probably four years, so, that are concerned that we need to look at our ordinances for parking on the street when it snows, and trash in the yards, and mattresses, and things like that, so at some point in time, Dave, if we could put that on a work session or something to just look at our ordinance and see if it's in the right place, and what we need to do to enforce it. I know, for those who don't know, Linda's heading up a beautification committee, as I understand it, and we're gonna put some efforts to do some service and volunteer work to make sure that our city's beautiful. I think that's all I have.
Just a couple of things today, again, thanks to staff, everybody that works in the city, they do a great job, and I don't know if Linda knows that she's over the beautification committee yet, but thanks for assigning her.
She was in our work session last week.
She and I, you sure can't protect ourselves.
I think one of our plans was to have a beautification committee. We just, we had a work session just a little while ago on our economic development, and we're working on a strategic plan for economic development, we'll get that out to you so you can start looking at that, but that'll be part of our master plan. But just some things that are going on in economic development here in Pace, M-Tech, as you know, they're looking at the south end on 800 South across the interstate to put in a building there, and they've got the legislature to try to get their funding for their first 100,000 square foot building, I don't think they'll get funded this year, but they think they have a really, really good chance to be funded next year. UBU is getting the 30 acres on up by the power plant, they're still just have a few technical things to work out with, UDOT on some survey stuff, and then they'll be purchasing that, they have the money in escrow, and so that'll be 30 acres there. We do have two active groups that are looking at bringing hotels to Pace, and they're very active and working very hard to do that. Both of them want to have a little bit of convention center with their hotels, and both of them said they want to bring a restaurant, but they're finding out that restaurants are a little harder to get than they think, so we've all learned how hard restaurants are to get. The mayor had President Smith come down a couple weeks ago, so we had a good meeting with him, talking about what Smith could do, we're trying to, hopefully, try to get into a marketplace, but at least upgrade their store, and so, he's been down here and come to Pace, and I think he spent about three hours here. And then we had a RV dealership down here a couple weeks ago, and they're looking down and coming down sometime, some place in Utah County, they're one of the bigger RV dealerships, so we're being very proactive, trying to recruit businesses down here that will bring sales tax base to us to help do our roads and keep the taxes down for everybody else, and then also give opportunities for us to be able to get things that we want right here in our own community, so, that's all I have, thanks. Well, I want to thank the road department for the snow removal, that they paused just long enough that we got one of our first snow days in history, right? Some of us are educators. Otherwise, I think everything's going good, they've covered it all, it's tough when you're the last counseling person to speak, so, anyway, keep it up, thanks.
Also, as long as we're gonna thank, I'd like to thank the council, they do work extremely hard, and they, we are, as a body, trying to do what's best for Pace, and with your involvement, and we do need your involvement, glad to see you're here, so we'll go ahead and move on. Is there any scouts that we need to acknowledge? If not, then we'll move on to the committees that care, so we'll go to that now.
Is Anthony taking here? Come on up. Right there by the mirror. Okay, Anthony is from Pace High School, and they wrote, Mr. Wright wrote, "We are so lucky to have Anthony as a student at Pace High School. Anthony is very involved at school, taking numerous college courses, and being involved in extracurricular activities, however, perhaps the best characteristic of Anthony is that he's always so positive and friendly. He always has a smile on his face, and is willing to help anyone and everyone, and is very respectful of both his peers and teachers at the school. I cannot think of a better person for this award. Congratulations." And Autumn Huntington, come on up. Autumn is from Mountain View Junior High, and they said that Autumn is a kind, hardworking student, she always participates in class and has great insights to whatever we are doing, always willing to help, she's kind to her classmates and teachers. And then another person said, that was Mrs., or Mrs. Stewart, okay, and then Mrs., I can't say her last name, but Latisma, said that she is amazing, I can give you, and then Autumn's attitude is contagious, her positive attitude brings out the best in others, she's a great example to have in the classroom. And then Mrs. Reber said, "Autumn is very quiet, but very kind, she's also very generous, she enjoys talking to people about what she's reading, she is an avid reader, way to go, Autumn, and also lets them borrow her books, who? She, she's one of those people who, the more you get to know them, the more you like them. Congratulations, Autumn." Last one is Ephraim Wild, come on up, Ephraim, he is from Pace Junior High. And they wrote, "His teachers have wonderful things to say about him. Ephraim always comes to class with a smile and a positive attitude, he is kind to others and works hard on all of his assignments, he works so hard to be able to do this every day, I appreciate him so much, he brightens everyone's day, and I believe we need more people like Ephraim in the world." And that was Mrs. Sachby. And Mrs. Emodio, "Ephraim brings such a positive energy to class, he is super polite and kind to those that are around him, and I can count on him to work hard and help those who are struggling." Mr. Archer said, "Ephraim always comes to class prepared and ready to learn, he is a skilled student that also gets along well with his peers." And then they shot me one extra one today from Mrs. Lattner, and she said, "Ephraim has been wonderful to work with this year, he doesn't complain when work is hard and always has a smile, he has a great attitude and is a joy to have in class, it would be wonderful to have more students in class like him." Congratulations, Ephraim. Parents want to come up front and take a picture, you're welcome next to me right now.
So many cameras staring at me.
Did you guys see them on pictures, or have you got them? Autumn, okay, everybody?
It looks like they're not turned around yet.
You can say if you want.
Nobody ever does.
No.
I'd love to, but I got work.
Glad to have you here for the time that you're here.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the chamber business of the month, it's Ty here. Oh, you're here, I should have known that. Not until... Thanks for being here.
Hello, I am representing Pace Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce, I am a member, so I want to, today I get to go ahead and award the business of the month to American Parkway, American Parkway, I don't know where you're calling it, to Parkway Health and Rehab, so just a little bit about them. Parkway Health and Rehab opened in 2009 to provide 24-hour skilled nursing care and specialized rehabilitation services on a short and long-term basis. With 62 rooms and a staff of more than 60 dedicated health care professionals, Parkway prides itself in being ranked among the best facility in the industry. With its immediate proximity to Mountain View Hospital, the owners of Parkway have planned to expand the healthcare presence with soon-to-be-developed assisted and independent living facilities. Parkway is proud to be part of Pace City and its vision of the future. Parkway is proud to be part of Payson City and its vision of the future. So I'd like to go ahead and present this to, so Craig and Jared will make sure to come up here, too.
Well, we're just privileged to be a part of such a great community. We recognize that those who have built this community now live where we work, and we have the privilege to care for them. So we want to make sure that we're providing the best care possible in a wonderful setting. We just got word today from our owners, we have some money in escrow, so we will be doing a painting and flooring upgrade in our facility, a few other things that we're replacing some old equipment that's outdated, so even better setting for those in our community to recover and live out their days. So appreciate being a part of such a wonderful community. Thank you.
Thank you for being part of us. Drum roll.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, public. My name is Ann Humphreys, and I am the Chair of the Library Board, and we have a presentation. I see several of our board members here tonight. If you're on the Library Board, can you raise your hand? So these are people that volunteer for the library, and if you are here to support the library, raise both hands. And if you dislike the library...
Oh, no, we're gonna lose a lot of our people. No, no.
That's why we're going at the beginning, so you can read. All right, so this is a presentation, kind of a state of the library tonight. So if you can look at that quote by David, I believe it's Lane Keys, I'm not quite sure. "Bad libraries build collections, good libraries build services, and great libraries build communities." So you can all read his book, but since you haven't, I'm just gonna flesh that out a little bit. What does he mean by that? A bad library builds collections, but then they think that's all they have to do. If you get the books, they will come. Good libraries build services, and that's great, but they haven't really reached their full potential. Great libraries build communities. And what does that mean? Great libraries build communities because they see the community itself as a collection. A great library is a public place where individuals, businesses, and the community in general explore those collections, they connect with the services and the other people in the community, and then doing that, they create new knowledge, they share knowledge, they build a community, they solve problems, and really, they make the whole community great. So, I don't know. Yeah, okay. All right, I can only do one thing at a time. So 2019 was really a great year for the library. We've had a lot of great years, but I think 2019 was really one of the tough ones. I'm not gonna read through all of these, but just point out a couple of them. First about, first of all, is huge shout out to the Payson City, the Alliance Club, the Friends of the Library, which is really, the citizens of the library have supported the teen room and the library renovation. If you haven't been there in the last year, you need to go because it looks beautiful. We love it. We are also using every square inch of the library, including basements that can't be used, open generally to the public, and we hope that they don't flood. All the closets, everything is really used. We love our library. The bottom one, we want to give a special shout out to Dave Johnson. He helped us. The Payson Friends of the Library is the fundraising organization, and it took us eight years, but we have finally become a nonprofit, according to the IRS, so that is really going to be a good thing. On the next column, so they started a tween night, and this is ages, like that upper elementary school, early junior high age. They said, let's, our first one, they planned for 30 and hoped they, you know, that was a good number, that they would, that there would be somebody there. Almost 90 kids showed up, so it was obviously a need in the community that we are meeting them, so.
So what do they do on those tween nights?
So it's really a variety of different things. They, Donna, I have not been to the tween night because I'm a little, because they card you.
So you have your Harry Potter and your escape room and all that stuff?
So we've got a variety of activities. We've done, we usually have a lot of stuff going on. We have games. We've done game nights where we have games and movies and popcorn and other fun things. And we've done, we did one that was like a Grinch night, they held these Grinch games. We're gonna be doing a winter games night just this week. We did a Halloween party. Just, we do a lot of different activities because we have so many of them, so we have a lot going on. So we have like a general theme, and then have games or crafts and a movie and all sorts of stuff.
And so one of the ways that they utilize that space, because when you have 80, 90 kids, they have an activity upstairs, they have an activity on the main floor, and then they have an activity in the basement where a lot of the reading programs happen, so.
I've been lucky enough to be involved in some of those things that have been there at the library, and very grateful to be part of that.
Yes, we certainly appreciate your support. So just one more on this that we'll talk about. One of the programs they started in 2017, the Friends purchased 1,000 t-shirts for the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten Award. So if you have a toddler or a preschooler, you can sign them up at the library and keep track of the books that you read to them, and if they read 1,000 before they attend kinder, and then they receive a shirt, obviously an early literacy program. Because it takes a while to do 1,000 books, this program is really just starting to catch the wave. So 21 shirts were given in 2019 out of a total of 57. So we see, we're going to see those numbers increase. That does not count all those kids that maybe read 700 or 800 or 900 books and just didn't make it. So that's always a plus. The more books you can read, the earlier, that's great. Those are kind of the highlights. Any questions about any of the other items on here? Okay, so every department, every business has ways to track how their business is doing. And so these are some of the areas that libraries look at, and most of these we'll go over a little bit more in depth. But the physical library collection, so that's the actual books, DVDs, audiobooks, those kinds of things in the library, has really stayed the same, and that's basically because we only have so much space, and so we, it's a constant decision by the librarians. They look at the things that they own. If they're not being used, then they move them on and buy new things that will be more appropriate for the library. So that's a, that number has stayed fairly consistent over time, although the things in the collection change. The download collection items, you can see that that's really increased as technology has made a difference in everybody's world.
So what would you classify as downloadable collection item?
So those would be ebooks, audiobooks that you can use online.
There are available through the State Library, and we also can purchase our own copies for our library.
All right. All right, circulation over time. This is the bread and the butter of the library. When you think of the library, you think of borrowing books, or DVDs, or the audiobook. So we've divided those up, the physical collection, the digital collection, and that's specifically the children's collection. And these are how many books are circulated over time. So again, you can see how the digital collection has changed. It goes up and down, and why? Economy, you know, 2011, 2012, we were still in the recession, coming out of that, maybe people were not buying books as much, they were using the library. In 2019, it went down because for a whole month, we were closed, and so people couldn't borrow things. They've also had years where the catalog system has crashed, and so they've been closed for several weeks. And it just is an evolving kind of thing. If you look on the right-hand graph, you can see that from this year, from last year to this year, or rather, from 2018 to 2019, we are seeing a significant increase. The one, the yellow or orange that's way down low, that's January, and that's when we were closed for renovations, and so that explains that. But you can see that we are seeing an increase in general. All right, this is one of the exciting things for me. So everybody knows about books and DVDs and audiobooks at the library, but Donna had an opportunity, and Donna is our library director, she had an opportunity to write a grant for other types of things, and so knowing that the rebranding was going on, and adventure was part of that rebranding terminology that was going to be used, she wrote a grant, received money to buy these different adventure kits. So how many of you have gotten backpacks, or snowshoes, or kayaks, or pickleball things from the library? Those are a lot of fun, and you can borrow them for free. If you damage them or lose them, then you have to pay for them, just like with any other library item. But this is an opportunity for people to go out and enjoy our wonderful community in a really different way than most people think of the libraries. So you can see that's really exciting. Of course, some things are more, are checked out more often in the summer, other things are checked out more often in the winter. There was a little bit of a dip in 2019, because we were closed. Any questions about these items? All right. I think libraries were the original internet cafe. You can get onto wifi at Walmart, but there's no good place to sit for very long, so. The blue are the people who use the actual computers in the library. The red are the wireless network sessions. And these are not just people going into the library and looking at their phone for a second and checking the weather. These are actually people who the librarians look at, and they have their laptop open, and they are doing their studying for school, or they are engaged in telecommuting activities, doing productive work for a period of time, not just a browsing kind of thing. All right. One of the things that's really increased in the last several years is programs at the library. And the next slide is going to show what kinds of programs those are, but this gives you a good idea of how those have increased over time. So these are things like storytimes and the tween night that we've talked about. You can see that the attendance over time has really skyrocketed, and I think that goes to show that the library is finding those needs in the community and providing programs, and people are attending because it's something that gives them value. The number of programs has gone up. The dip is just because of the one month being closed. So the library has, on average, six programs per week, so that's pretty impressive. These are the different types of activities, and they don't just have an activity because it thinks, they think it's going to be fun. It needs to have something that will give the community value. So literacy, of course, is again the library's backbone. All the different types of literacy things that they do, different storytimes for different age groups, really splitting that down. The mother-daughter club and the books and boys' book club, those are book clubs specifically for an elementary school age group, where it's really appropriate to have boys doing, reading some books, and girls reading other books with the adults that are in their life. I think most of us have been involved with reading programs. The summer reading program has been around for decades, but the library has reading programs throughout the year, and they've also incorporated different activities for different age groups. So if you are an adult and you want to be part of the reading program, you get candy versus the little things that the children get. In the middle section, one of the areas of any community is what's happening with their youth and helping them to develop in positive ways. The library club is an after-school program mainly for elementary school kids, but they divide up into different age groups and do different activities with different themes. Of course, the Friends and Family Nights has been a huge success, and then they have, like I said, the gender-specific book clubs. And then finally, all of these really build the community because they're done as a group, but there are some other things that don't fit in those other categories. So Library Night Out. So I believe it was last year they had a Library Night Out and did the big cleaning craze, had an evening of education about that, which was great because everybody cleaned out their closets and their bookshelves, and the Friends of the Library got awesome donations, and we had a great book sale as a result of that. They've done self-defense and just different things that's really an open subject area that they can do. Any questions about the different programs? All right. So Overdrive is the State Online Library, so you can check out on your phone or your device a book or an audiobook. Those are primarily what they're having, what they have on their things. And you can see as the technology has changed, that the numbers that people in Payson City with a Payson City library card have checked out that number of books, so. The State Library has been paying for this program, but they have decided, starting last year, that they needed the city libraries, the county libraries, to start contributing to that as well, so that they could, first of all, increase the, what's available, and second of all, continue to support other programs that the State Library wants to provide. So this is an explanation of how they have come to how much each city or each entity would be responsible for paying. We can go through that if you'd like. I've learned a lot about the libraries and how they're funded and things in preparing this part of the presentation, but it's pretty specific, so do you have any questions about this one?
Yeah, just one question. So the 5% were under $50,000. About how much would that be that we pay the state for this program?
So this year, or for 2019, it was not quite $2,500, is that correct?
Yes, we need to get it in our budget.
Oh, okay, so the 2019 assessment was just under $2,500.
That's a good use of money.
Yeah, because it was over 27,000 books.
So you're talking about like, yeah.
If there's 10 bucks if you're using yourself, 10 bucks a book, yeah.
Yeah, that's a really good deal.
Yeah, I would like to, you know, and I believe this is what you're saying, but I'd like to call attention to the fact that you're doing more with the same group of people in the city by and large, but now we're growing, but starting back, you know, really in 2014 and really starting to skyrocket up, you're giving more options to the same group of people, but now that we're growing, you'll have that added ability, too.
Absolutely. Okay.
Well, I was just gonna say, with the growth that we know is coming, like, we're already maxed out. Like, we can't handle any of the future growth, 300 and so on homes that we already talked about, plus those that we know are coming unless we address library issues as well.
The library is definitely a key piece of the community that needs to keep this, so. All right, let's go on to the next one. So these are things that we are looking forward to, talking about, asking for, keep going. So currently, our children's library is not a full-time position. So, currently, our children's librarian is not a full-time position. And the children's librarian, one of the main things that she, he or she does is the programming. And so you can see as our programming has increased, that's a lot of her time. And to be able to really keep maximizing that, not only for the people that are here, but also for the people that are coming, we believe that she needs, that position needs to be a full-time employee position. The library hours, back in 2017, they increased from one hour a day, or six hours per week. We believe it's time to increase them again. We're seeing a lot more people that are wanting to stay later at the library, and so that would be, I think, something that the library is ready to, to address. In terms of budget issues, some of the things that are really helpful, I know it's been a few years, but the library is still really, really happy about having a janitorial service at the library. So it's not the librarians doing the janitorial service. So yay, thank you, please don't take that away. The programming budget. So a few years ago, so if you think of a pie, the circulation budget was split between the children's and the non-children's items. So children's bought, bought books and DVDs and things for children, the other part was for more of the general population. So what they did is they increased that pie, and then they took out another division, and that was for programming. And so we, we think that that is a great thing that we need to keep on doing. Before, it was just the friends, and they were just kind of taking it from their circulation budget. And, but now it's specific, it's separate, they have a budget, it's much better to track. So, thank you, and I hope that continues. Obviously, we talked about overdrive, we need to, to look at that as a specific item in our budget to support that program, and know that this is still an evolving kind of thing. How they figured it out right now, 10 years from now, it may change, just as the technology and the businesses are changing, but that's going to, that's not going to go away. It'll just continue to evolve. Of course, the cost of printed materials is always increasing, and Donna always has books and DVDs and items that she would like to buy if she had a little more money. Doug, you mentioned this, we're really at a point with the library, it is, the building is maxed out, and we're landlocked. I don't think we could go up in that building, I would, I would be really worried about that.
Are you on the roof?
I would rather be on the roof than anywhere underneath, because that might not be so good. With the anticipated population group, and the, that's already on its way, you know, those subdivisions are being moved into, and we have more coming. You have a master plan going on. Right now is the time to find a central location, to start talking about places. There is lots of, of land that's out on the edges, but is that really where we want to have our, our building? We wanted to make sure that we find a place that's pretty accessible to the population, as well as along kind of the main corridor, like the bus routes and things like that, so more people can utilize it. And then, last but not least, this is Library Speak. It's a radio frequency identification system. So Donna has put in a grant for $56,000. We have not heard officially.
Oh, yeah, we did know for that.
Oh, we have heard officially?
Probably only got half.
So we got half. So, that's something that we would like to look at with the budget. Whether the city can help, sometimes Friends of the Library, other things can help, but that's something that Donna feels really strongly would be something to really help the library. When I asked her, okay, so what is it, why do we want it, other than just, it sounds really cool, this is what she told me. So apparently, one of the things that it can do is, you put your book on this pad, and it checks it out, like, boop. You hold, put your old stack of books on, and it, so, that would make it much easier for the patrons, much more user-friendly. It would really help the librarians in terms of time, and making sure that they're not making mistakes. And then they could do other things that really service the library patrons, service the community as a whole. The other thing it does is it prevents theft. We don't believe that we have a huge problem in the library with theft, although it, it does happen, and it would only take a couple very creative people to make a big impact in a very short amount of time with theft for our library. I don't want to give any hints to anybody, so.
So will it automatically audio to you when your book's overdue, you know, just say your book's overdue to you?
Like a little self-destructive, you don't, that would be awesome. That sounds like a great idea that we need to work out, so we can send it to other, we can make a patent to it.
You have a question back there, if you'd like to entertain that?
I've only lived here for about six months, and using the library system, they have now to check out books, two or three times, it actually hasn't recorded the books I checked out. So if I was an honest person, I could have kept the book, and you wouldn't know.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And I think that is what happens a lot of, you know, you may have 100 books in, in that six amount of times, but if you take the librarians, they're doing hundreds of books a day, and if you get five or 10 of those that don't get beeped, then it causes, they have to go and look for the books, and people get overdue fines, and it, yeah, it creates a lot of errors. And the last thing that it would do is get, give an accurate count of the visitors in the library, so we could see those peak times, we could see actually how many people were coming, help us monitor like our programs a little bit better, just in terms of how many people are really there during those program times versus other times. So, there's a lot of good things about that system, and that's something that we would like to have discussed. So, that's a lot of information, what else, what can I answer?
Well, number one, well, thank you for what you do. Donna, thank you. Molly, I'm sure I'm gonna miss a whole bunch of people, but thank you for what you do. As you said, it is the center of our, of our community, and as Councilman Hewlett was talking about the retail prowess that we're going after, that's part and parcel of what we need to help augment the budget, so that we can afford some of these things. And it's a very hard thing to balance the budget, but we need to know and understand everything you told us.
Absolutely.
I just want to thank the, everybody on the staff of the library, and all the library board for everything you do there. It's a great library. Do you have any ideas of where we could go with the library? I like it downtown, because it brings people to our downtown, but I know the building's too small. Have any ideas of where we might go?
Donna has really been coveting the new ball fields.
Or I'll totally chop you down on that.
You can't have them.
I think that we've almost convinced her, but if you start bulldozing out there, and she's there, you'll understand why, so.
Call the library on the hill.
Give it enough time, and money will solve that issue.
We don't, but we're certainly willing to have some discussions, whether we do that as a work session, or whether we invite, like Carl, to the, some of the board meetings. I'm, I'm open to some ideas on how to put together that, that discussion. Maybe we need a subcommittee with Donna, and some of the board members, and then some of the different people from the city, you know more about what's going where, and what properties are owned, and perhaps what may be more available, so.
You have another question, or statement?
That's a city-owned property in that central area of the city that is available.
Yeah, kind of along that main street corridor, along the highway.
That's the only piece I can think of, is that little piece next to Memorial Park, but I don't think that's big enough.
That actually was set aside for the library a long time ago, but yeah.
It was called Library Corner. And maybe we could just, for the library, and put parking someplace else, but not, that the place it does on that piece.
I, I think we need to look at traditional ways, and also out of blocks too, so I think all of above will, will get invented if we can.
I even wonder about, I, I mentioned to Brian that Petite Need, we own that whole block, and I know that they're short-staffed, if we could kind of combine the two processes together.
Are you talking about in Petite Need, or a separate building on that property?
To make a model, you know, there are options that we could look at. We'd have to get new bathrooms first.
We could take away that, that sledding hill.
Well, I don't know where the kids would be very happy about that.
Put the library on a hill, though.
I think we need an inventive without taking away things from other parts of the city too, so.
I think it's a good discussion.
We need to have that discussion, and we will.
Okay.
Yeah, can I just say, so I work with the library board, and they are fantastic, like, they do an amazing job. It's, it's fun to go work with them, and, and the ideas that have been flying around for the last several years, I mean, there's all sorts of things going on. And so, one of the things I, I thought about, and I like the initial quote, is, is the libraries are the root of the community. If you want to build a community, you have to have places where people can go and do things, and that's where, when you hang out together, when you talk together, when you create together, when you learn together, you build a community. And, and more and more, libraries are becoming community centers. And we thought they were going to die a little bit, because online stuff, and they're not, they've reinvented themselves. In fact, at the high school, where Councilman Christiansen can talk about this, but they've kind of almost became like many maker centers, which we've talked about with Councilman Hewlett, where they've got building blocks, and Legos, and Raspberry Pi coating stuff, and, and they really are very transformative. And, and the role that they've taken on the community is really large. And if you've got 90 kids showing up to a tween night, that's, that's a pretty impressive turnout, especially when you consider the space that we have. Couple thoughts that I have as well before we leave. Just one question, do we discuss impact fees to address upgrading a library when we did our impact fees before? Is that part of?
So Carl and, Carl and I have had a, kind of a mini discussion about that. So one of the things about impact fees is that you have to use it in a certain amount of time.
Right.
So, six years, and so.
And that's the hard thing that we have with capital improvement.
You'd almost have to have like a modular building system.
Yeah.
That makes it really hard, yeah. But there are other creative ways to fund.
Yeah, I just wondered, because it is growth, but, but you are kind of restricted, and that's a weird thing that the state does, I think.
Well, I think if you get within five years, we say, hey, yeah, we're looking close, and I think we can add that to the impact fees.
Sure, yeah.
Within that five years. So it is an option that you say, hey, we're getting really close, if we had X amount more dollars, we could entertain that kind of stuff.
One other thought before we go, this, this has come up lately. You see my beautiful chair right here, it's no longer orange. So maybe we can get Kevin Bacon and John Lithgow to sign in chairs, if they know that it's a fundraiser for the library, and then we auction them off, we won't make all the dollars for a new building, but, you know. But I think people would be more likely to do it, if they know it's like a community charity type event, that they could come in and make it, sign or sit in there, or I don't know.
Having, you know, maybe we need to have like a Footloose night, as part of teen night, have pictures, I mean, there's a lot of creative things, and have fun.
Doing 80's street dance, thinking out of the box.
Absolutely.
Okay, unless there's any more conversation, I think we appreciate you and everything you do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Now we're gonna lose our audience, dang it. Okay, we'll move on to number seven presentation by UAMs, Mackenzie. I see Ron's coming up too.
Yeah, with budgets coming up, one of the things that UAMs offers is a rebate program that they'll administer for Payson, we're involved with three right now. But I thought it'd be a good time for the expert, Mackenzie, to explain all the programs that are, that are available, that we, that we might want to consider in the future. And, and Mackenzie, she runs all, all rebate programs for all the cities of UAMs, so she's a, she's real busy at it, and great, so turn the time over to her.
Thanks, Ron. Like I said, my name's Mackenzie, I've, you know, worked with UAMs for 21 years now, and kind of started from the bottom and worked my way up. Do you have a, I'm sorry. So these are our programs that we currently have. Home Energy Savings is kind of your appliances, your cool cash programs, kind of your central air conditioning units, your heating units, sealator refrigerator programs, where you recycle your old refrigerators, and then commercial lighting program. So these are all of the rebates that we offer for the Home Energy Savings program, and I've put the amount that we offer for each one. And Payson participates in all of these programs right now. I don't know that.
I just bought a watch.
Well, if you purchase it within 90 days, get onto our website, get an application, and the application's online, you know, we've.
Through UAMs?
Through UAMs, and it's underneath our Smart Energy program. And all you have to do is, you know, make sure you enter Payson City account number and a receipt. So the thing about our appliances is that we only offer this for replacements. We do not, so you guys talked about growth. We don't offer rebates for people that are buying new homes, and the appliances come with it. The clothes washers are a little bit different, because you buy those personally, but most of these things come with new homes, and we don't offer rebates for those. A couple years ago, we were, the lighting fixtures were really popular, and, so we had to put a limit on it, and Ron decided to put 12 fixtures per household. And currently, that's just 12. If you guys would like, we could do it yearly, so if you want more customers to try to replace their lighting fixtures more, I mean, that's just really up to you guys what you want to do, so. The next slide.
Another random question, kind of random, so.
Do you want to go back to that slide?
No, not necessarily, but a lot of people in Payson try to get rid of their refrigerators, but our landfill doesn't take refrigerators.
We have a program for that.
Do you have a program for that?
We do have a program.
My goodness.
And you guys, and your, your customers do take, like, in the last six months, I've probably had about 10 customers from Payson take, take advantage of that program, so.
I named you like eight months ago.
Sorry. So our cool cash, like I said, is more the central air conditioning units. This is what we offer in rebates, and we also pay the companies that come in and put it in there. So we encourage them to do this work for the customer, so they get a rebate along with the customer.
I just got that knocked over.
So, is that, is that just for 90 days?
If you want to talk to Ron, I can push it through.
I just did one this summer, too.
I did last summer, that's why I waited.
Oh, yeah. You can do it in October, November.
Keep that in mind when budgets roll around.
And we offer also, when companies come in, they do proper sizing on your home, to tell you what size of unit you need, and proper installation for it. So we offer rebates for all of that, for the customer and for the workers. So it encourages people to really get the, the size of the, the unit for their house that they really need, so. And then we offer evaporative coolers. And this is a little bit more higher, because evaporative coolers are more energy efficient than air conditioning units, obviously. And, you know, the, the bottom one, it's, it's a lot of money, but to get your whole house duct just for an evaporative cooler, it's quite expensive, so. Not a lot of people take advantage of this, because you know central air conditioning is a lot better than evaporative cooler, but.
Do you have programs for whole-house fans? That's something I've been new to the internet, do you know what a whole-house fan is?
No, what is?
So like, I, I put one in last summer, because I had just switched from swamp cooler to central air, and I'm like, this is a little bit more money than I really wanted. So I have a, a fan that's in my ceiling, so I open the bedroom windows at night when I go to bed, at about 3 o'clock in the morning, it kicks on, moves about 3,500 CFM.
Oh, wow.
Until about 7:00 AM, and then I shuts off, I close my windows, and then my air conditioner doesn't kick on until 1:00.
Oh, really? Those are things that I like to hear about, because I can do programs like that, I can create any program.
You know, I kind of built my own, but they're about $3,500 on Amazon to buy a, a unit that, that goes up there, and it just, it ducks it out, so it cools off my attic every night, it cools off my whole house.
It's like an attic fan, basically.
Yeah, but it's actually, it draws the air from. Yeah, but it's actually, it draws the air from up through my whole house.
Really?
So it's not, it's not like you put in the end of your attic. So it's actually full ducted, it's a 16-inch fan, but.
I'll look into that.
I've got lots of people that are like super on board with them and want to do them in the spring.
Because any program, I mean, I am willing to do any program because I believe in energy efficiency, so.
Right. And that's way more efficient than running my swamp cooler. I'm utilizing that cool air at night that we have in Utah that I think is overlooked.
I will definitely, definitely look into that. And if we could start a program.
Yeah.
I only need one, I need one city to join a program and it's a program, so. So we also offer ductless heat pumps and heat pumps. We don't have a lot of participation in this program because this is kind of more rural areas, which you guys were. You guys are growing now, so. But we do have this program. Pace and does not currently participate in these programs, but you could always join. It's very easy to join them, so. So one of our newer programs is the gas furnace. So when you buy a gas furnace, it comes with an ECM motor. We offer a rebate for that, making sure it's properly installed. If you don't need a new furnace, but you want to put the motor on it, we offer a rebate for that also. And then we, like I said, we offer the proper installation and sizing on that. And then we have smart thermostats. Smart thermostats right now are very popular. A lot of our cities, that's what most of their customers are getting rebates for is a smart thermostat. So Pace and City could also join that one. So the only ones that Pace and City contribute in right now is the central air conditioning units and evaporative coolers, so. And then here is our refrigerant recycling program. We offer customers $30 and we pay 1-800-GOT-JUNK-70 to pick them up. They actually take that money and then they go recycling, recycle them. I can get a list of every single refrigerator I've ever recycled with their model numbers just to make sure that they're not reselling them or trying to resell them in their little shop that they have, so.
So do they call 1-800-GOT-JUNK or do they call you?
No, they have to call me. They'll talk to me. The problem is that 1-800-GOT-JUNK will just come and pick them up and they'll charge the customer. And I don't want that. So they need to call me and I will schedule it and I give them a date and a timeframe that they come and pick it up. And it's usually within a day, so.
Can we get this put on our power bills? Whoever's in charge of that?
Yeah.
I think this needs to be, you know, rebates or whatever you want to call it, listed on their energy efficiency some way. Just a blurb at the bottom of it that's permanently put there.
Yeah, I have to check for Cheryl. There's only certain amount of stuff you can put on the bill a week yet. You could put an insert in maybe.
Well, I know that they do that. How are you in comparison to your neighbor, which I've never really found a whole lot of value in that because it makes me look bad.
I want to see somebody who's below their.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to know. I'd never see that. But anyway, somewhere like in that block, maybe throw it in there as a blurb if that's really what we're after, is to get this down.
So we have a commercial lighting rebate program. This is kind of, you guys were talking about Smiths, maybe upgrading to Smiths. You know, maybe if you give them an incentive for replacing their lights, they might be more willing to upgrade it. And it's all done by the participants, so it'd be done by Pace and. Pace and City employee would go and look at the job before anything's ever approved. They would give me an amount that they feel comfortable paying. I would send the letter to the company that wants to, you know, upgrade their lighting systems. And they have to accept it. And if they don't accept it, then it's just, there's not a program or there's not a rebate for them. Once the job is completed, they would contact me and then I'd contact Pace and City, which they would go and do a post-inspection to make sure that the job was done correctly. And then as soon as I hear that it was done correctly, I send out an incentive check. And incentives can be from anywhere from 25 cents up to $125 per fixture, just depending on what they're doing. And then we actually bill that through the UAMPS monthly power bill that we send to Pace and every month. Some cities underneath the same program have offered rebates for your refrigerator doors at grocery stores and gas stations. These are just an example of what they were willing to pay. Morgan was willing to pay a little bit more money than Hyrum, but the company still did the work. It's more energy efficient for them. So that's another idea that Pace and could implement into the city. And these are some of the future programs I'm looking at. I will look into that, the whole duct system, that's a great idea. I don't know if you guys know what WeMo plugs are. They're all run by your smartphone. You can turn them off and on from wherever you're at. It's just a plug that you plug in your appliance in, just to, you know, you leave your coffee maker on, you can turn it off on the road. The EV charging stations, that's getting more popular now with all the cars. And so I know Lehigh City is really wanting to push this program quite a bit because they want to buy a bit of them, so. Those are some ideas that you can think about. And then also, you know, we can tailor your guys' programs to whatever. We can offer any type of rebate. Smart thermostats, most cities offer $50. Pace and City will only offer 25. We can change the rebate amounts to whatever you guys feel comfortable with. I also have money to help with advertising, so if you guys want a flyer to put into your power bills, I can do those. We can get magnets to put on appliances so people know about these programs for you. I could post on social media, help you guys get your program out there to make sure that people know about it. I have, I have applications back at my office that I can send, so you can leave applications. So if people come in, they see it, they can take one home. Anything to help you guys promote your program, I'm more than willing to do, so.
Can he pay Doug? He does our social media and I'm sure he's going to put this out there, but we might as well pay him.
I have so many posts behind right now. I have a list of things I want to post and I just haven't.
Hey, I know how that is. I have to take care of all our social media too, so. Is there any questions?
So if this is so much to offer to the Pace and City, but you say we only write now that we're central air, are central air and you're about to do your benefits or do we have all these benefits?
You have the Home Energy Savings, which is all the appliances, so your washer, you know, your dishwashers. Some of the, some of your appliances that you purchase are Energy Star. But our list, it has to be 20% higher than the federal standard. So you might purchase a washing machine, but it might not be on the approved list because it doesn't meet that standard, so.
I got a real quick question regarding a company that replaces their lights and go, maybe is it to go to LED or?
So we consider the whole fixture is a light. So you can go and buy the fixtures now that you replace your whole fixture and it's LED lighting.
Okay. I know there's a company here in town, it's not a real big company, but they recently went through their whole office building and replaced all of those.
Yeah, and so that would go underneath our commercial lighting. And if, you know, since you guys don't participate in it, he could have went and applied and got a rebate back. But we could always go back to and do that for him if you guys want to do that. And it's $10 a fixture for LED lights, so. And you know, your parking lot lights are more like the $100 fixture. But then again, that's really up to you what you guys want to pay. If you feel like you only want to pay $50 for an outdoor lighting fixture, then it's $50. It's just what it is. So you guys have a lot of diversity that you can use, so.
It's good to know about these programs.
Yeah.
Like I said, I can help advertise as much as you guys want. I can post it on our social media sites that Pace and City participates in these, so.
We have people ask for refrigerator disposal every year.
Well, please send them my direction. You know, as long as they're.
It's way better than getting somebody to come take it. Right, just come get it, that's where I would listen, come get it.
They'll give you the money too, I promise. And I usually send out checks within 45 days after the pickup, so, I mean, and I'm cutting checks once a week, either once a month at least, so.
So Pace and City use your program with all the big factories out there and get the, you know, they get lighting upgrades too.
Well, Pace and City's not part of the commercial lighting, but if they.
That's different.
Yeah. So if they choose to join that program, we could look at that. I mean, that's something that.
Yeah, I work at Liberty Safe, so I can talk to them, but if they want to do, if they want to upgrade, you guys can help mount that. We have a lot of electrical units there.
It would just have to be, they just have to join, Pace and City would have to join the program first, though.
Oh, okay.
And then Pace and City would have to approve the amount that would be regated back, what they're comfortable with, so. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ron.
As we get into budget, we'll figure out about how much money we want to spend per year. I think we're in the $5,000 to $7,000 range right now, so. But anyway, thank you.
Do we spend all that $5,000 to $7,000 again?
No, I think, I think this year Pace and only spent $1,000 maybe. And it's all remaded back to the city at the end of our budget year, so. And we just kind of carry.
We can get it out and then we can see more where we're at.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again. Okay, number eight, discussion regarding recycling, Dave.
Mayor Council, all of you know we're in a contract with Republic Services for our recycling. Going to have Reese DeMille come up here and talk with you a bit. He's with Republic. He's been great to work with over the years. I know, I think we talked to the council a year or so ago. Nobody really foresaw the recycling market tank. I know China pulled out and so the contract that we signed put the risk on Republic to pay for and receive, you know, credits for the recycling materials. But it's kind of tanked and it's become real expensive to get rid of the recycling material. And so I know Reese wants to talk to you a little bit about recycling. Our contract goes for another couple of years. I'm not sure what the council's going to do and that comes up for renewal. But I know some cities that have recycling, they have stepped up to help pay for some of those tipping fees to get rid of the recycling on a voluntary basis, but just going to have a discussion with council on that. I'll turn it over to Reese.
Mayor and council, thanks for having me. Try to make this quick. Yeah, it was about 18 months ago, maybe a year ago I was in here. When we, when we bid on this service, there was no commodity risk or value for, or there was no rebate or risk for the value of the commodity. It was at about $0. So we figured we may get $5 a ton, we may have to pay $5 a ton, but it would be somewhere around a wash. And that's what we made our proposal on. Fight the cough for a while. And since then, the price for the commodity because of just the way the whole industry has gone, we're now being charged $100 a ton to dispose of your recycling material. Now, I do want to say, when I say dispose, I do want to ensure you that what we're being told by Rocky Mountain Recycling, so we're just, we obviously just pick up the product at the curb. Then we take it to the South Utah Valley Transfer Station. That transfer station has one side for trash, one side for recycling. Obviously, the trash goes to the landfill and the recycling side goes to Rocky Mountain. And they take that material up to their processing plant and they sort it through this maze of conveyor belts and bales of recycling pop out the end and they sell it. The issue has been, the markets are down so far, that the cost of processing the material is upside down. And so that's where that $100 a ton comes from. And so in discussions with Dave and all of the other cities, and I have a list of what the other cities have done in our area and also in the last month, and some of the other cities around the country, it's just been such that this was an unforeseen issue. Nobody saw it going like this. There's not a person in the world who saw it going like this. And so we're having to absorb every penny of that $100. And so we're coming to you, I am, to see if you would help alleviate some of that because it just was not in the cards for us. And I guess that's the issue. And that's why I'm here, see if the, if the city would help pay for that, some of that $100 a ton. Now, you do about anywhere from 35 to 40 tons a month. So you're looking at about four. So where we were not paying anything, now we're paying about anywhere from $3,800 to $4,000 a month to dispose, to tip this recycling material. And today's comment, the contract goes through June 30th of 2021. So about 17 months.
So where do you dispose of it now?
So we take it to the South Utah Valley Transfer Station, to the side of the transfer station that is recycling. And then they put it in trucks and take it up something to what's called a MRF, a Materials Recovery Facility, on 30th South and 9th West.
And you have a pretty attractive system for that to make sure that it's not making its way back to the landfill? I have people asking that all the time. Talk to Dave, because I've got the trucks numbered and watch them pretty closely, but.
Well, I mean, our drivers are human, but that is a terminable offense if they were to take a truck to the landfill that should be going to the transfer station. Because we, yeah, it would just. Could it happen? It could, but if we found out about it, they would no longer be working for us.
So the amount you charge the resident, is that basically to cover the, your trucks and your drivers and your fuel and everything? And then you're looking for something to cover the tipping fee, is that what it is?
Yeah, so, well, we don't charge residents, you do. So we charge you 765 right now. And I don't know what you charge your residents, whatever you charge your residents, I don't know. But yeah, that's to cover all of our costs, which in that 765, we didn't, we didn't plan for the $100 of that to be in there. You have about 2,280 homes, I believe, in the recycling program. 44% of your residents recycle right now. You were at about 53, 54% a year ago. Then you allowed an opt-out, another opt-out program last fall. And you lost about 7 or 8% of that, and I think it's now 44% now.
So the tipping fee was for, per ton, was that what it was?
Yeah, charged per ton.
And how many tons do you do from Pace and, do you think?
About anywhere between 35 and 40 tons a month.
And just in Pace?
Yeah. And we don't mix that with any of the other cities, so that's just.
So do you have in mind what you would like the city to participate in? Do you have any suggestions?
Well, I mean, just kind of, a lot of the, what some of the other cities, Pleasure Grove, American Forest, and other cities that we do, what they did was they added a, anywhere between 65 and 85 cents per home rate. And then they took, and then we established a baseline, so let's say it's $100. If it goes to 110, they paid one penny for every dollar that went up, added to that rate. And if it went down, they took a, we decreased the rate. The easy way, with 17 months left on the contract, in my opinion, would be just to split the cost. So we pay 50, you pay 50. If it goes to 110, you pay 55 and you pay 50.
And that's per ton, right?
Yeah.
I have a question for Kent. Do you have any idea how much we saved in the landfill and how much it's saving us to use recycling?
Just a little over a ton a day.
A ton a day?
Yeah.
How much do we charge per ton?
$40.
Is that a calendar day or a work day?
Work day.
Is it work day?
Yeah, we're up to 300 in three days a year.
Okay.
So by recycling, how much, how long is that extending the life of our landfill?
It's, it lasts, calendar year, the recycling is 444 tons. So you're just over, just less than a ton and a half per day. We do about 75 tons a day in the landfill, so. Year, 300. That's four days, five days out of the year. Without sitting down and with Reese and running the hard numbers, I'm just throwing.
Right, right. We'd probably have to have staff make some recommendations to us, you think? And then we can take a look, a long hard look at it. Surely don't want to run you into the ground either, so.
Well, I ran some numbers and since it started getting bad, we've paid somewhere around $75,000 that we didn't, in any type of pro forma, that we didn't think that we would be. And we, we knew. And we knew it, it could go, like I said, you know, maybe ten bucks or something like that. That's kind of been the average, but a hundred was just out of the, you know, what we thought possibility.
So is this nationwide?
Oh, yes, worldwide.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, is because, it's like you go to these cities where they have to recycle. So do you have any, do you want to do it there?
Well, I mean, I can tell you some.
There, so it's going to cost more when you have big cities that are bought into it, like you have. Companies of scale, yeah, they just charge them.
Yeah, I mean, there are cities that it's ten to fifteen dollars a month to recycle, is what they're charging the residents. And it's, you know, the product, so on last Tuesday, I took the mayor, the city manager, one of the council members to the Materials Recovery Facility in Salt Lake from Pleasant Grove. And they had some questions about recycling, and if it was being recycled, what the process was. So I took them to that, or we don't know, obviously I had to call them and get a tour set up. But they went through that tour, and they were amazed at the process. They thought it was just going to be dumped on the ground and then dumped to another truck and taken to the landfill, but it's actually going through the process, and bales are being popped out at the end, and they sell those. But just the value of it, where it used to be anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty dollars a ton for certain materials is down to maybe forty or fifty dollars now. But it still costs, you know, way more than that, a hundred to a hundred and something to process it.
Is that worldwide?
Well, every location is going to be different, depending on how big the.
Are there better places to process it than like the United States?
Well, part of that processing is the transportation, and we're inlanders, obviously, but that transportation to get it to a port on the coast, so that they can get it to China or get it to a market, it used to be China, but to get it to a market where they could sell it.
And China's been taking recycling, if I understand correctly.
They still take cardboard, but plastics and mixed paper and that, they've stopped taking pretty much altogether. But cardboard, they still take, they still make TVs, so eight boxes.
I guess that's probably where we'll have to be at, is to have staff give us some ideas, and then have the council look at it and see where we can do it within the budget.
Mayor, if you have one comment over there.
Okay, please.
Uh, where I came from, we didn't have to recycle, but if we chose to, we received a trash can for free, and we got deducted from our bill the amount that they made off the recycling.
Yeah, they're not, that's the problem there, they're not making any money.
It was a wonderful thing back in the day, yeah.
That was just four years ago.
Yeah. We were, we were actually, not us, but Rocky Mountain, were making money up to eighteen months ago. And they obviously still are, and we would take the recycling, so they're still making some money. It's just the amount that is upside down for what we're doing.
Well, I like having the option of recycling for the city. And I think as I get older, it's seem more and more important to have things like that available. So I think something we ought to look at.
So that's one of the questions that's going to come up, because this is seventeen few months that our contract comes up, and the council got decided we're going to continue recycling. Because our numbers have gone down because we have that opt-out period. And we initially were up closer to sixty percent, now we're down to forty-four. So it's going to be a discussion, if there's a, you know, we did the opt-out. There was a program where you could opt-in and have to get somebody to. There are people that love and want recycling. And so I think if we do a waste program, or you're going to have people mad at you. If the price goes way up, we're going to have people mad at you, so. I'm not sure what, I don't know what the best plan is. We charge an extra fifty cents per month to cover the overheads for billing and stuff like that. So there is a little bit there that maybe could help. I don't know if I'd be comfortable, it'd be up to you, if you want to raise the rate midstream right now to cover some of those costs. I know the recycling that I've just taken in, they just added an extra charge on. And that was the city council that determined that. So if, you know, if the council wants to increase the price, or if you want to absorb it, or if you want to tell me sorry, we'll talk about it in seventeen months. But it's just something, I think it was the market crash so far, I don't think anybody foresaw that, but that's where we're at, and if there's something we can do.
Well, if you use thirty-seven tons a month and twenty-two hundred customers, and we split it fifty-fifty, it'd be like eighty-four cents a month that we would have to raise their fee to cover our portion if we split it.
So if we just took the fifty cents, that carried a lot of it that we are recollecting.
And so how much are, how much do they pay the people who are doing it? How much?
Here in Payson, uh, they pay dollars for two cents.
And so then people who don't do that, how much do you pay?
Nothing.
Nothing.
It's a fee on top of it.
It's an additional fee. Those that sign up for recycling, that's the, in addition to the regular garbage.
So they pay the twelve seventy or whatever they have plus?
Yeah, they pay for their garbage cans, but we have our own garbage collection, so they pay that for the first can. And then if they want to recycle, they can just. So those that participate are the ones that are.
So they're paying?
And some people don't do recycling, they have two waste cans.
But do we ever see ourselves? Like, you know, as you grow bigger, sometimes you have to do recycling and it's taken away from the citizen.
I think some cities do that, they make it mandatory.
It's been a city-by-city decision, just like banning plastic bags and.
It is a city-by-city. When, our city council over the years, we turned down recycling a couple of times before we did this last time. But the bids that we received had several tiers. If it's a mandatory, here's the cost, because companies know, they're hitting everybody. If it's an opt-out, this cost, if it's an opt-in, it was an additional cost because you don't know how many are going to sign up to opt-in for. So there are several categories, and that's when the council backed, and we entered into this agreement, chose the one they wanted. And, but yeah, that was an option, you could make it mandatory for everybody.
I mean, I don't know if we want to do that, I'm just.
Yeah, our council chose not to do that, and I'm not sure how many, you know, any reason.
A lot of cities with their new analysis is going to one rate. So they just say it's seventeen dollars and fifty. That's what Salt Lake County does, a lot of the other places are starting to do. Saratoga Springs and some others, they just go to one rate. And you either get a garbage can and a recycling can, or two garbage cans, or two recycling cans, or whatever you want, you get one of each, and it's seventeen fifty or whatever they charge them. And then if they don't want a recycling can, they don't have to have one. But it's still seventeen fifty, it's just a waste rate.
So when they recycle, do they just like all the recycling in there? Like the metal and the cardboard and all that together?
Yep, and then it goes to this MRF, and that's where they separate it.
So two thoughts, kind of diverging a little bit. Pardon me, I hate changing contracts. We have contracts, and some of the contracts we have have provisions for yearly reassessment. And so I have a hard time changing a contract that might have been poorly, I mean, we want to be good partners, but part of it is like maybe it was a poorly written contract, and I'm pretty sure that it's not going to look the same next time you have contracts.
You got that right.
Lesson learned, right? Yeah, and why, I appreciate it. So part of it is like we sign a contract, work out the contract. Other hand is utilities go up all the time. Like we have CPI increases, Consumer Price Index, and as expenses get higher, we have to charge for them. So we add, upgraded the PI line, that means the system costs more, right? Or on anything, like if it costs more, then we pay more on the rest of our utilities. So pardon me, like, well, that kind of makes sense, that's what we do with the rest of our utilities already. On the other hand, and this is not saying that I want to do this, but just out of curiosity, is it better for you if we were to opt-out completely right now versus continuing on with the continued, the regular contract?
Nope.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be better for us, because we still make a little money on the collection side.
Okay. That's, you know, I was just kind of curious on what that was. Like I said, I think recycling's good. I think where we can, we ought to make the world a better place, quote Michael Jackson, but.
And to your first point, I totally get it, but I have twenty-three contracts in the state from St. George to Broom City, and I don't have one that doesn't have an amendment. I mean, every contract's amended as states change.
How much would that fifty cents that we use for clerical for doing the billing, how much, how hard of a thing would that be for us to absorb and then only bring it up thirty cents? Would that be a hard thing for us to absorb?
We could absorb, it's just, we wouldn't, we wouldn't pay the cost of what our front office does to handle the recycling and go to building, but.
And that general fund?
That's something that would be easier than raising the rates on the citizens right now. And then maybe that, we can run some numbers, we can come back and run some numbers. We didn't ask you to make the decision, and I do want to have a discussion.
I'd like to see numbers both ways. I don't know, I mean, if it's worth a call trick to run it out there and see what people think, where we're at, and go from there.
I hear you're saying that we have to pay thirty cents more.
I think most people are still doing it, would be okay with it.
My thing, odd is I have two trash cans and a recycling bin, and I typically fill up all three every single week. The recycling is just like, crap, I wish I had one more, it's already full, now I count every week.
Most of the cities that we, that increase their rates, they're a little worried at first, and then they get ten phone calls the first week and they don't hear anything after that. And I'm not, I'm not asking, I don't want, I recycle, I don't want, nobody wants their rates raised, but in this situation.
They might weed it all the ones out that don't want it, because as the rates go up, they opt out, so. And it might, more of them might opt out, but maybe those are, maybe the ones that are still in really want to do it, so.
I guess there's not that many that are on the fence right now, if they're doing it, they're doing it because they want to do it.
I think that's where we should leave it, is we turn to staff and see what the money will be, and how we'll weather it and make a decision.
If I can just request that we do it fairly quick, I mean, I came a year ago, and if we could do something fairly quickly, that would be great.
Okay, would be in the next two weeks, would that be?
Next month.
We might go back on the next agenda, we have to give you the number.
Yeah, two weeks.
That would be fun. Can I say one more thing, Mayor?
You bet.
I want to compliment the city, I just want to tell you a quick story, maybe you already know this, but. My wife and I helped with the salmon, salmon cook, salmon supper. We worked in his booth with him for about three hours one night. And I think I gave two big pieces, I was told, but anyway, it was kind of. And it was a great thing, but a year ago, I won a pair of sunglasses that were like worth like two hundred dollar Oakley sunglasses out of golf tournament. And I had them there that night that I was working in that booth. And I took them off, and typically I pay like twelve bucks at Walmart for my sunglasses, but this was a special pair of sunglasses that I had won. And so we got to Provo, I live in Cedar Hills, and we drove to Provo, it was dark, and the football team, I believe, was taking everything down after that was all over. And I realized that I had left my sunglasses there. So we turned around, and we were in Provo. We drove back, and we looked all around, a lot of the, the chairs were all down now, and almost everything was all put away, and I thought, I'll never see those again. And to your kids' credit, or whoever's credit at the city, I left a message for Dave that night or the next morning, knowing full well I'd never see those things again. And he called me about ten o'clock the next morning, says, your white sunglasses are on my desk. I know it's a small thing, but it does show some class from those kids in your school and those workers at the city. And I know it's only a pair of sunglasses, and whether, if they were gone, it wouldn't mean, you know, anything to me, but I thought it said a lot about your, about your community and the honesty there. So I just want to share that with you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to E. Action Items Resolution Development Agreement for Ashley Ridge Subdivision, Platte D., Jill?
Yes, Mayor and Council, here's a quick item.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anyway, so we're, you graduated from your final approval last month for Ashley Ridge. We have included conditions of approval and the terms of, and the obligations of the applicant in this agreement. Before you finalize your motion on this, there was two changes that needed to be made. So the one was the name of the developer. So we had in there Capizoli Construction Incorporated, and that does need to be changed to Intelligente Vida Incorporated. And so we have already made that change, I said that really fast. Intelligente Vida Incorporated, or Incorporated.
LLC.
Yeah, oh, it's an LLC, you're right, it's an LLC, sorry. This cap is always. So the current property is owned by this LLC. The developer was just thinking of maybe changing the ownership before the plot was recorded. He has chosen not to do that, and so it will remain with the current property owner. And so we will make sure that that is included on that agreement. And then also, our legal team did look at the text that we had in the agreement under electrical consideration, so that's on page three. There was some additional language that they wanted to have included, and so that will be included as well. That is just to make sure it's consistent with some of the court proceedings and rulings that we've received recently between the city and SESD. And so we will just follow suit by the legal team and make those changes and get that signed by the applicant, so he can forward. The applicant is here, he has questions for him. He does not have any questions for the city council, but he has questions for him. He is here, otherwise he's just looking for this agreement to be approved, so he can move forward to the next step in the process.
And those changes staff's good with, and.
We are, yes.
Are you sold out of that?
Okay, unless there's any questions, I think it's pretty straightforward. Any council discussion, if not, then I'm ready for a motion.
I think we're sold out there.
I'll make a motion that we approve the development agreement for the Ashley Ridge subdivision with the changes that were presented by staff and agreements by the legal team with the name change and for Platte D.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motions are made, been seconded, we'll start with roll call votes, starting with Mr. Second there.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries, thank you. Go on to resolution number two, agreement with Rocky Mountain ATV. Dave?
Mayor Council, we have a proposed agreement for the council to consider. We, we've got the major infrastructure out there in the business park. Rocky Mountain ATV is a big player in the business park, we appreciate that. Mr. Thomas is here on this item, but he's looking at expanding as well, purchasing some other property to the, to the north. And we've had discussions in the past where the, some of the old master plans for that area had a road going right close to the, his current building. And as we looked at it with some of the new growth of the building, we thought it'd be better to move that road further to the north, and which Rocky Mountain would appreciate. But if they purchased that property, they wanted some assurance with the city that we would not require them to put the road in, that we would put it in fact north where we're thinking of putting the road. And we gave them a letter that, with that assurance, but we wanted to memorialize that into an agreement. So the agreement basically says, and he would have to work out the purchases of property with the property owner, but if that's the case, that we wouldn't require them to install a roadway through that property where he's looking to expand.
Would they still be required to do their half of the roadway on this?
There wouldn't be a roadway on this area to be further north.
Be up to another. So their property won't be adjacent to the road.
That, this property would not be adjacent to the road.
I just didn't want to clarify that no road would be built and we would need one on the north side.
No, we're planning a road more where the property, a natural property line, and you put it through there. And then if there needs to be another road going both ways, it can happen, depending on what the development is.
Is there enough, can he get, are they reconfiguring? If he could get, my only concern would be, which I'm totally fine, I'm not playing the devil's advocate here, I just, I know that as it comes around that bend, his entrance is right there. As he adds on to the end, we will add additional entrances to the opposing side of the building as well, correct? Just an egress onto the main road.
On the north side?
No, onto American Way.
Yeah, from the north side.
So yeah, so right now you can get into the, his complex on the south end of his building, where we put egress on the north end of his building. Not a road, just a way in and out, so all your traffic will flow out of the same side of the building?
Right.
Okay, so you're just looking for storage space? Okay, so you're just looking for storage space?
There will, there will be another roadway, just getting further north.
Right, right, I'm not just saying a roadway, I'm just saying like into a business, and it turns into the business.
And there are certain things the buyer has to have too, so we, we discuss those, there won't be a formalized road.
Anyway, that's what's before you.
Any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, the way you turned it into an agreement with Rocky Mountain ATV, um, don't need all the legal jargon in there, just, just to prove that resolution, that's part of the packet. Hold on. Let the resolution as part of the packet.
There you go. There you go.
I'll second you. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion been seconded, all, uh, roll call vote, starting with Councilman.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you.
It was a long time to wait for that.
Yeah, and thanks for being here.
We appreciate it.
Okay, go number three presentation slash resolution, sale of property, Central Water Conservancy District, Dave?
So, Mayor, Council, in your packet, there are, um, there's twelve separate agreements that are, that are easement agreements. As you know, this, the Central Utah Project is putting a pipeline, uh, right now, they're on the Salem Canal Road coming up to Payson, uh, Mountain. And this, this space is called the Payson Spring Lake, Spring Lake Bridge, and that's another part of the Central Utah Project that's coming south Utah County. Uh, so, uh, they are asking that the council agree to give easements, most of them are in the roadway. Uh, you, you've seen the, the alignment, it'll go up over the, down the mountain onto Seventh South to Main Street, then Main Street down to fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred SR one ninety-eight, and then towards the Spring Lake. So, the, the, the proposals that we donate those easements to the, the other government entity, um, the Department of the Interior. And, and there is one little section of property by the, uh, if you look on your map, it's the, uh, by the Dry Creek Channel. That is a, that's a deed, so we would deed that property to them for a structure they need to put on there as part of the pipeline. Also, so tied to those donation agreements that we will donate that, there's also a contract they have to, to build the, the facility. Part of the, the building, the facility would replace many of our utilities and upgrade our underground utilities along that way, and so, um, the motion before you today is to approve those twelve agreements plus the warranty deed agreement, there's thirteen agreements total, and, uh, and then we'll get to work. The construction, they, they're hoping to put this out to bid the last part of March, first of April, they would probably start construction until later in the fall, and they would, it would take about a year to complete the construction. There is, and we'll get more on the construction part when they, when they get ready, but, uh, we know that there's times when we have our celebrations, we know there's other times, school and things like that, where the contract, contractor has to work with those things, that's going to be part of the bid package. That, that they have to minimize, it's going to be a, the roads are going to be torn up, we can't stop that, but we try to minimize the, the, the problems during Angier Days, during Scottish Festival, some of those items. So, tonight's motion is just for the easements and that one property purchase or donation.
And easements are contingent on, so to be, like, in case something weird happens.
Yes, it, it's going to happen because they put it in several different reaches over Spanish Fork, and now this part is Salem, but it's all dependent on government. It's dependent on funding, so.
Which they've been funding for a long time, they have no reason they'd move that.
No, I, I don't, I don't see any reason why they would, I just want to.
But it's true, it's dependent on funding, correct?
Okay, unless, I don't, well, I hate that, I wouldn't expect any, uh, discussion, and if there is, I'll be glad to entertain it, okay? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution, approving and authorizing the execution of twelve donated contracts and grant of easement agreement. One warrants deed with the United States of America for the construction of the Santa Claus Pipeline through, uh, Streets of Basin.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been seconded, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Roll, roll call, they didn't tell me that, my cheat sheet lied to me. Kim! Okay, roll call vote, starting with Councilman Christensen.
Aye.
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 Okay, now, okay. Okay, we'll go, uh, F other, Annual Training Open and Public Meetings Act and Municipal Officers and Employees Ethics Act.
I got a question on this, didn't we do this like four months ago?
I'm sure it feels like that.
Because I get this like every month from everything, so I've had so many times.
I think it just felt like eight months last time we heard it.
Can you do it quick?
Um, it would have been sort of a part of last year, we try to get it in the first couple of months, um, uh, each year. Um, there is a requirement, um, in the, uh, one of the acts that indicates that the mayor is, um, charged with, um, bringing it to the council every year, once a year.
Unresponsible.
Oh, no, and, and I, I, um, I've handed out, for those who may want to know, I've handed out the actual law. Uh, the only exception is that I highlighted, um, definitions, um, so that they were easier to see, but no change of words. These, these two are the two acts, um, that we go by as municipal officers, employees, um, any group that needs, has to, um, that's a government group, has to comply with the Open and Public Meetings Act. Let me direct your attention to the Municipal Officers, Officers and Employees Ethics Act, because it, it requires, um, updating from time to time. Um, and the purpose, uh, or purposes are to establish the standard of conduct for municipal officers and employees. Let me grab my water bottle before it gets too far along. And, um, to require these persons to disclose actual or potential conflicts of interest between their public duties and their personal interests. If it's disclosed, and it will, it requires two different types of disclosures. Uh, one, it's any, any type of, uh, interest need to be put in writing and on file, um, and provided to the mayor. The, um, recorder is really the one that keeps those, and those are public records. So, anything that you, uh, as we go down through, any type of disclosure needs to be in writing plus during any of our meetings, if we're approaching something that is on the agenda. Before we get into the item, um, once we get to that agenda item, um, you just need to get the attention of whoever's chair in the meeting, let them know that, that, um, you have a potential conflict of interest. And, um, briefly explain what that is, and that's it. You can still go forward, you can still vote, you aren't required to excuse yourself, um, but, and if you follow those, those two things, a written disclosure with the, um, through the mayor to the recorder. And anytime something comes up on the, uh, agenda, um, that protects you from any type of offenses. Those, um, other, otherwise, if you don't, um, then you open yourself up to liability and potential criminal, uh, charges. Um, as used in this, uh, section, economic benefit tantamount to a gift is the, um, concern or the, the description of what it is that, um, they're talking about. And it's offense to disclose or improperly use information in order to further the officer's personal economic interest, or to secure special privileges or exemptions. Um, something like that, could be trying to get out of the ticket, uh, that's a personal exemption maybe. It may be, um, benefiting you in some, some way in the neighborhood or something like that. Um, use or attempt to use, um, an officer's or employee's official position to do the same thing, okay? Economic interest or secure, um, special privileges. Or knowingly receive, take, solicit directly or indirectly, or you or for someone else a gift that is, um, tantamount to something that would tend to be improperly, um, influence a reasonable person. That's the standard that, um, Ethics Committee would be looking at, not what did you think, but what would a reasonable person think? And, uh.
You're saying that reasonable?
I'm, I'm saying, it's a, it's a standard that they would be taking.
Question is, is this impeachable? Sorry, I shouldn't have done that.
And several of these paragraphs at the end have a, a paragraph that says, this section does not apply to an elected, appointed, just, employee who engages in a constitutional violation of this section. To the extent that it also violates seventy-eight, seventy-six, eight, one, five. In other words, it's saying, we are putting in protection, weaving the, the government, that if you do something so severe, just this section doesn't protect you if it's a criminal offense. Um, it's a double jeopardy type of protection, so that you can't say, oh, I followed all of, all of civil procedures or something like that. If you have, uh, if your behavior is criminal, that's what, uh, takes the rule of the day. And you'll see that, uh, language at the end of several of the paragraphs. Um, they point out different types of potential associations or relationships, and each of them have the same type of guiding language. Uh, those relationships are, uh, in the bold language, uh, section. Compensation for assistance in a transaction involving the municipality, uh, public disclosure and filing. Um, if you're a broker and you are brokering maybe land that the city's looking to buy, those type of things, and also are off certain city, you need to disclose that type of thing. And those disclosures, because they may not come to a, a public meeting, they need to be, um, ten days before, um, an agreement is entered into with, between the elected official and the, the entity that is being represented to the city. Or ten days before the receipt of compensation by the op, by the, uh, official, um, and it's whichever it's earlier. So, um, getting that, again, that disclosure into the city in writing is what is the saving factor there. Um, another relationship, interest in business entity regulated by municipal. If anyone that has a business license or has to comply with, with, um, any type of requirements of the city, you fall under this. So, if I have, uh, the ice cream stand or the little chat, and I open that every summer, I need to be disclosing that, that I'm doing that because it's regulated by business license. The, uh, relationship of having an interest in a business entity doing business with the municipality. So if I'm a partner in some type of consulting firm, engineering firm, and I'm on the city council, um, and my firm wins a bid to provide services for the city, I need to have that, uh, on record. And, uh, and immediately prior to any discussion, um, in a meeting, uh, you need to disclose that each and every time. So, if we're talking about, uh, consulting on pressurized irrigation, that's something that comes in front of us a lot. Anybody that would be consulting and have a position, they would need to disclose that every time. Now, they can go forward and participate, they just can't, uh, neglect that. That's when it starts to turn into something that's, um, out of the law. Investment creating conflict of interest with duties, so if you were investing in something, um, not just, uh, have an interest in it, but you're investing in. Um, we had a, a person that every time he had invest, he'd invest in, um, I think it was Rocky Mountain. And it got to the point where he had more than two thousand dollars of value in their stock, even though he didn't have much influence, he would disclose that when we talked about power issues of buying out Rocky Mountain as they annexed. And he just, it was just common, and at the while, you know, just, it was part of the whole meeting, and, um, and that's what protected it. The. Any type of potential or obvious conflict of interest, um, uh, needs to be disclosed. And, again, uh, anytime there's a change in those things, your written statements need to be updated and brought current. That's, uh, not just for any, um, uh, elected officer, but all municipal employees, they have those same obligations as they go forward in their jobs. Um, shipping gears, Open and Public Meetings Act, this is one that you live by all the time, and, um, most of the compliance is done by this, it'll be right here. She keeps the records, she keeps the minutes, she does the recordings, she publishes all of those things, and I'd say ninety percent of Open and Public Meetings Act is, uh, done by staff complying with these rules. Notice prior to a meeting, um, it may require certain timing, um, lots of our land, these type of statutes require lots of lead time and sending out information to, um, neighbors and things like that. That's all done by staff behind the scenes. When it comes to our situation here, we're talking about a situation where that. We're talking about a situation where that everything that we do in Utah is considered, um, open for the public and for public comment and, and, or, um, access by the public. Um, meetings, the definitions of meetings are in here, and what's not a meeting, meeting. A chance, social gathering is not a meeting. A meeting where all of you go to attend somebody else's meeting is probably not a meeting for you guys, and so it doesn't even trigger. If you start deliberating about Payson's, uh, items in the League of Cities and Towns conference, then that may not be appropriate. But, um, you can't take action, you can't allocate funds, um, you can't come back in and say, what we discussed down in St. George, everybody in favor? That type of thing isn't there, but meet, being together and being able to talk to one another and to, uh, discuss things and, uh, where that you're not convening a meeting of the Payson City Council, then you're probably not running afoul of that. And that's, that can, uh, social gatherings can be a conference, it can be. that can, uh, social gatherings can be a conference, it can be a lot of different things that, um, we attend in, of course, of our, our business, but not in the official capacity of our, uh, elected positions. Um, it, it, uh, it, this legislation covers a lot of things that we don't deal with, it covers the legislature, it covers, um, specialty districts and specialty agencies, and so if you go down through, you'll, you'll see that there are a lot of different things that are, are there that don't apply to us. Meeting is, general rule is a meeting, um, is open unless closed. Um, you open a meeting, and, um, for a closed meeting, you have to have an open meeting to begin with, take a vote, two-thirds of the quorum present, um, has to be able to, has to vote for, uh, going into a closed session before you can go in, and then once you do that, um, for the record, we mean either on the agenda or verbally, indicate what, um, what topic that we're allowed to go into, um, uh, for the record, it needs to be on the record, and once we're in a closed meeting, then it is a recorded matter, but by law, those things are sealed. Um, the only way that I'm familiar with and that is provided for in the Meetings Act is, um, uh, for someone to file a petition with the court to make that a recording in those minutes open. The judge would, um, by himself, listen to the recording, review whatever minutes are there, and determine gay or vague, and if he says, no, it's not to go open, he can't say anything about what's in the minutes, he reseals it, and it goes right back as if nothing had happened. Um, he doesn't necessarily, it can be partial also, he's the judge, he can say, well, they should have talked about this, but it wasn't of consequence, other than that, um, that's the only way that you can get a, a closed session, um, opened, and in the same vein, it explains why or how important, um, it is to keep the information that you learn in a closed session, um, closed, it's something that you don't go out individually and discuss among the community, and that is protected information until such time as you bring it back out into an open meeting and present it, and lots of examples of that is, uh, land transactions. We'll discuss strategies, things like that, and, uh, we don't take a vote there, but we bring it back in and move it forward, once that, uh, we're ready to move forward with it, the concerns are value, market, all those type of things that are, are mentioned here. The other things that you can, um, work with are the, uh, things that you've heard of before, the competency, um, whether mental or physical of a, uh, of an individual, um, those type of things. The only one you can't do that is if you're replacing one of your members. Um, you can't go into a closed session to discuss candidates to replace a position that is, is open midterm because somebody may be moved or something like that, that all has to be done in the open, in the open meeting, but, um.
The whole discussion has to be in an open meeting, you can't do it in a closed session and then come out and.
For elected, yeah, for elected, um, filling an elected interim position, um, that it indicates that, um, interviews, any of that type of stuff has to be done, um, in an open setting. Um, it can be done in a, uh, an interview setting, but it has to be open, it can't be in a closed setting.
By open, you mean not in a, not in a confined, closed doors?
Right, it, it, public can, yeah, public can come and listen, and they don't have a right to comment or anything, but, um, the meeting has to be open, and that means open to the public.
It has to be publicized, I take it then?
Yes, any, any of that, um, I've only done it one time, twenty years ago, we had somebody that moved, and, um, there were names that were discussed, and there was a vote taken, and it was all done in an open session, and it, his term was, you'd think about eight months to fill that position.
Okay.
Uh, and then the next, uh, election, they're elected, uh, for the remainder of that term, but, um, that's, that's a rare type of thing, but that's one of the things you have to do in an open meeting. Um, but it is important to remember that those, those things that are set in a closed meeting, that they won't be discussed outside of that. Um, things that we normally don't, um, work with, but are there, um, collective bargaining, pending and reasonable imminent litigation, um, purchase, exchange of, or lease of real property, the strategies involving that, um, the, uh, there, there are several others that other agencies have authority over, we don't. Um, deployment of security systems, personnel devices, uh, excuse me, security personnel, um, security devices and security systems, those can all be, uh, discussed in closed meetings, and, I was gonna say and should be, but that's, that's my take on it. Investigative procedures, um, regarding alleged criminal misconduct, those can be done in a closed setting. If there's violations of these and there's allegations, uh, the city has, several years ago, uh, joined in an interlocal agreement and in compliance with state law, um, they have on paper, if you will, set up a, um, ethics review panel that is required by the state. Uh, to best my knowledge, we've never had to use it, but, um, if we haven't entered into that agreement, state law provides for a process by which, um, an investigation for alleged unethical conduct can, um, come about. Um, things that need to be protected that come to us, copyrights, trademarks, things like that, staff more than, than others, um, see those type of things, but those are the type of things that cannot be contracted out or allowed access to through requests and, and those type of scenarios. Um, there is a section on, one, a paragraph, can we find it? Electronic transmissions, nothing in this chapter shall be construed to restrict a member of a, of a public body from transmitting an electronic message to other members of the public body at a time, when the public body is not in an open meeting, not convening in an open meeting. So you can discuss things through text messages, those types of things, be aware, um, that they are public records. Under the GMA, which is the Government Records Act, a record means a book, letter, document, paper, map, plan, photograph, film, card, tape, recording, electronic data, or other documentary material regardless of physical form or characteristics, that is prepared, owned, received, or retained by a government entity or political subdivision, and where all of the information in the original is reproducible by photocopy or other mechanical or electronic means. Um, in the past, we have been asked to provide, um, emails on a certain subject, and, uh, we've sent out a request to all of our staff and city council to go back through and to research, um, your phones, your devices, and provide those things are city-related. Um, that's under the GMA Act, and they can ask for that, in addition to that, if there is some type of a, uh, criminal investigation, um, the courts can require that also, and destroying that is a, uh, criminal offense in and of itself. So, I, I say that because it's not all in the same statutes, but those are things that, that have come to bite others, um, in life positions as ours. Any questions?
Destroy that, that means I can never delete my emails?
Um, we can set up a timeframe, the GMA, um, rules on the state level, um, they do have a timeframe for all these different types of documents, um, some as expected.
If I got spam and raised it, I could.
If, yeah, if, if, uh, for a short period of time, usually, um, a year, um, there's probably a requirement to retain it for that period of time, or if there's, uh, for example, ongoing litigation, those things need to be retained for the life of that litigation, and they may actually be, um, compelled to be kept for the life of the case, um, not necessarily by you, but provided so they can be kept elsewhere, you know, other than your personal or your, your issued devices, but, um, it, it depends on the circumstances, but yeah, we are required to keep those type of things for a specific amount of time as indicated in the, um, GMA rules. Um, all documents are, um, have a, a general category, we can submit to the archives our list of how long we feel like things ought to be kept, and have that on record with the state archives, and so the cities can establish their own timeframes within a reasonable amount of time. Things that we, are mandatory, criminal records, prosecution records, court records, those are kept for as long as, um, some are in years, some are as long as a person is alive, so it depends on what they are. Other questions?
Well, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Um, Amanda May also emailed out these same documents, so you've got them electronically. We'll see you next year.
Thank you.
Thanks for the warning.
Okay, thanks, Mark, uh, I guess, uh, we would like to adjourn to a closed session, and if the council like to do that, go ahead and accept the motion for that.
Second.
Roy Calvo, starting with Councilwoman Ayer.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.